Thing on the agenda is for roll call. So I'll read the names and please indicate by saying aye. I'm Brenda Silvias, the Chair of the meeting. Moses is out of town today, so we know he is not here. Becky Daggett, Mayor Becky Daggett has not joined us yet, but is planning to join us. Ashley Page.
Hi.
Thank you, Ashley. And Erin is off of the agenda. Nadine Hart.
I'm here.
Thank you, Nadine. Tatum Covey.
Hi.
And the city staff, Anna. No Anna today. Caleb is here.
We can do some other agenda items, since we have quorum. Oh, and Becky has joined us.
Oh, Becky, thank you for joining us.
We do have several city staff joining us, too.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going through that or not?
I think we can proceed to preliminary business.
Yeah, okay, well, we do have a lot on the agenda today, so we're going to try to be very mindful of everybody's dedication of time to this agenda. So preliminary business, public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the Board on any subject within the Board's jurisdiction that is not on the meeting's agenda. The Arizona Open Meeting Law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item that is not listed on the prepared agenda. The commissioners may, however, respond to criticism made by those addressing the Board, ask staff to review a matter, or ask the matter to be placed on a future agenda. To address the Board on any item that is on the agenda, please wait for the Chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Do we have any public members with us today? We do not, that I see. Okay. So then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the meeting of April 18th, 2024. Those were sent out to you in your packet earlier this week. I hope you've all had a chance to look at them. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
This is Ashley, I motion to approve.
Thank you, Ashley. It's been moved, and is there a second?
This is Tatum, I'll second.
Thank you, Tatum. So it has been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes of the April 18th meeting as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to action items. So I'll turn this over for the Resolution 2024-05 to Sharice and Kurt.
Hello, this is Sharice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to present? Or would you like, it's in the packet. Would you like to present, or would you like to me to move the packet further? This is up to you.
I can go over the resolution and the payment standards. So we are here today to present the new updated payment standards. The fair market rents did come out by HUD. HUD allows us to increase those fair market rents according to our jurisdiction's need to up to 110%. We are presenting today to be approved at the 120% so then that we can take that back to HUD and say this is what our community recommends and has approved. So our fair market rents, if you can see, they're there in the yellow where it says FY 2025 published FMR. They did increase from last year. And as you all know, in our jurisdiction, they don't increase as much as we would like for them to increase to match what the rental rates are going at this time in our city. We are asking for an increase of the 2024 voucher payment standards at 120%. And that is just to meet those needs of our families that are out searching in our communities. It does seem like it's a major increase, but if we're looking at what our payments are and what our fair market rents are currently in our jurisdiction, you know, the efficiency size, the fair market rent says that they're 1564. We are currently seeing those rental rates at above $1,700. And so the 2024 voucher payment standards request increase to 120% for zero bedroom up to four bedrooms. Because those are the ones that we usually see as rentals on our program. We are asking for those increases up to 120%.
Any questions on any data that you see in this spreadsheet?
I just had a quick question, this is Ashley. I think the date effective up top is supposed to say 2024, but I was just curious why it's not effective like 10/1, why it's on the second day of the month? And I know it's always been that way, but I thought I would ask.
Right, so this affects the recertifications that we have already completed. And so by the time HUD produces and provides us those numbers, and by the time we can get it to the Board and get it approved, if we make it effective October 1st, it affects the work that has already been done for those that have recertified by October 1st. And so that way, if it's effective October 2nd, because we have right now on hold all the recertifications that are effective November 1st, to be able to get these new numbers in play. And this is just something that we've been doing every single year. This date is not set in stone. We just can't get the numbers and get it to the Board fast enough to be able to get those numbers approved before October 1st.
That makes a lot of sense, thank you, Sharice.
You're welcome. So there will be a change in that date then, Clarice?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, that will say 10/24, my apologies.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't hear any other questions. Are we voting on more than just this one part, or is this the whole thing?
So for the voucher payment standard, it's just this, it's the increase to the 2024 voucher payment standards at 120%. And so this, Caleb, do I need to read the resolution?
No, you don't need to read the resolution.
Yeah, we all have it in our packet.
Okay, thank you.
So the resolution has been presented with the background information, Resolution Number 2024-05. I would accept a motion to approve.
This is Tatum, I motion to approve.
Thank you, Tatum. And a second?
This is Nadine, I motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Nadine. We have a motion, we have a motion already on the floor to approve. Would you second it?
I second it.
Thank you very much. So it has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2024-05. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the next one. Thank you, Clarice, for your presentation. The next one is Resolution 2024-06, the HCV Utility Allowances Update. And we have, sorry, is it burrito?
Our turn is presenting on this, Brenda.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We are required under federal law to examine utility allowances once per year. We did the study this year, and it showed rather sharp increases to water. And I'm sure you've all heard the debate surrounding the new water schedule, but we're not debating it, we just are taking it into account. There were also some fairly good increases to electric. Gas actually went down slightly because of a change to the purchase gas adjustment. And then the last one that went up extremely sharply was propane. The reason for this is, in the past, we have always done propane as a percentage increase over natural gas. And the fact is propane costs are much more volatile. The current natural gas prices have been in effect since roughly 2019. And as we all know, propane has gone up a lot since then. So we changed our methodology based on the current propane cost per gallon. The overall increase on a two-bedroom home, there's a whole methodology that goes into it, I'm all bored with that, but was 16%. So this is a required change as opposed to one that we're deciding to make because it's under 10% cumulatively. So those are the utility allowances. And how the utility allowances work, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Our residents pay a minimum of 30% of their adjusted income for rent and utilities. The allowance for tenant-paid utilities is deducted from that 30%, and the remainder is what a voucher holder pays for rent. This will both help and hurt voucher holders, I suppose, because for those already in place, it'll make the rent go down because the cost of their utilities is going up. So they're being allowed for that. It will make it a little harder for those that are searching for a new place because the utility allowance is factored into the amount that they're allowed to spend overall on the gross rent. While it's unfortunate, this is something we cannot avoid. So, any questions?
Hi, this is Ashley, I just had a quick question. Just because I know that utility allowances coming out like in October affect tax credit properties in the sense that they have to adjust rents. Do utility allowances always have to come out in, say, October? Or could we change like the date to the spring when those Lytec numbers come out as well, or is that not a thing?
We're required to do it once a year. We could do it again in the spring. But it would really only be practical if there was a 10% increase.
Gotcha, okay, I'll table this for now, and I'll think more on it. Thank you so much, Kurt.
You're welcome, thank you.
I have a question, I'm just really confused. So where do you get your numbers for these utilities?
Directly from the utility companies.
Okay, so there, I just don't understand how you can heat a house with natural gas for $45. How is that only $45?
That's spread over the course of 12 months.
Does that feel really low?
While in the winter, it's less than that. And I'm not sure what you're looking at that's $45.
I'm looking at the four-bedroom utility allowance, but electric gets 228. And I'm looking at bottled gas, which is propane, that's $64. So if you have a house heated with electric or propane, you're getting a higher allowance than someone with natural gas. I'm just wondering why that is. Like, do you have any control over that?
No.
No, those rates are up to the utility companies. See, the rates are set by the utility companies. So, and then we use the amount, and natural gas heat is much more efficient than electric. And propane is just much more expensive than natural gas to refill. They were, on the day that I checked it, I believe they were at $3.29 a gallon as opposed to, I want to say it was 78 cents a therm, and a gallon is 2/3 of a therm. So it's based on their rates. And yes, you're probably not going to heat your home for $45 during the coldest months. You are also a majority of the year not going to pay anything to heat your home. So these allowances are what it costs in a year, not per month.
How come the Housing Authority doesn't factor in like wood burning? A lot of families have wood. You do propane for heat, but why not like firewood?
If propane is propane, electric, or natural gas is generally going to be the primary heat source. So if you're heating, say if you live in an area with propane, but you heat primarily with wood, which is not uncommon, you're better off taking the propane allowance, actually, because it's going to be much higher than if we factored in firewood.
But you guys could factor in firewood.
We cannot give, you can heat with firewood if you wish, but we cannot do two different heat sources on the same unit. That's double dipping. Because if you're heating with wood, that makes the price of your primary heat source lower than what is already been factored in.
That doesn't make sense, but okay.
Kurt, I do have a question. Do we actually have vouchers in propane-heated houses?
We do. We have some that are in Doni Park. We have others. Sharice corrected me on this one today. I thought Kachina Village heated with propane still. Apparently, they're on natural gas now.
They are on natural gas.
Mountaineer, I'm not sure about, but our main area where people heat with propane is Doni Park, where we have voucher holders.
Got it. Thank you for answering that.
Yes, and we have nobody that heats with heating oil. That's why there's no number there.
And that would be way more expensive. We don't really have heating oil in this area.
No.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, let's move to the resolution, if we're good with that. Resolution 2024-06, the Resolution to Approve Section 8 Utility Allowances. You have that in your packet, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
This is Tatum, I motion to approve.
Thank you, Tatum. And is there a second?
I'll second, this is Becky.
Becky, thank you, Becky. It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution for the Section 8 Utility Allowances. Is there any further discussion? With no discussion, let's have a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The same sign?
I'm opposed.
Okay, noted. The motion carries.
Can I get a clear audio from everybody there? Can I get a, I did hear that Nadine opposes. Can I get sign-offs from other Board members of approval?
Yes. How would you like them to do that?
We would do it via a roll call. If you'll just call each present Board member's name, and they can answer individually. Thank you, Brenda.
Sure. Mayor Becky?
Yes.
Okay. Ashley Page?
Yes.
Nadine, you're still opposing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Tatum?
Yes.
Okay, and I approve.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, guys. I would note, too, you know, we were just talking about the heating, but when you add all of them in, it's what it costs at my home, too. Those are very accurate numbers, so. And they just keep going up, Kurt was right.
Dangerous words, Brenda, dangerous words.
Dangerous.
Thank you, Kurt, for all your effort.
Thanks for the support, Sarah.
Anytime, my friend, anytime.
So we will move to the next one, which is Resolution 2024-07. It's the VASH revisions. And Kurt, I'm assuming that you're presenting this as well?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair. This is basically, I need approval for us to come into compliance with federal law. HUD released a notice that directed us to make certain changes to our VASH, which is our Veterans Supportive Housing Program. And basically, these are mandated by HUD, but I still need Board approval. I think that they're good. Basically, what it mandates is for VASH new admissions, and only VASH, that we use the HUD low-income limit, which is 80% of AMI, as opposed to HUD's very-low-income limit, which is 50% of AMI. And so it would, in theory, I don't believe, we've had a lot of VASH people denied for income restrictions, but still, it opens it up to those that might be. When HOTNA goes into effect, which is still out in the universe, we will not be able to apply the $100,000 asset limitation to VASH participants. The third one, we've actually already allowed, which is lease terms of less than 12 months at admission or transfer. Under HUD regulation, when someone comes on the program, their lease must be 12 months initially. This would allow for someone to be, to lease for three months, if that's what the landlord wanted. It would allow them to lease in place for their remaining lease term, which might be seven months. Leasing in place meaning they already live there, but they're coming on assistance while we're helping them. So it allows greater flexibility in the lease terms for those VASH participants. Program termination, in other words, we take them off Section 8, would no longer be required for serious lease violations under current law, and this will still apply to all other Section 8 programs. If someone is evicted from their home for a serious lease violation, we also are required to terminate their Section 8. This is good for the integrity of our program because landlords understand we're not giving them someone that's already been proven to be a problem resident. However, flexibility in VASH and our other special programs is always welcome because they're just different people in different parts of their lives. And then exception payment standards up to 120%, which we just, which you all just approved, would be allowed without HUD approval for all VASH participants. I see a question, Madam Chair, from Nadine.
Oh, Nadine, go ahead.
Yes, could you please, these acronyms, I do not work with on a daily basis. VASH stands for what? And I forget what HCV stands for.
Sorry, I believe I introduced this at the beginning, but VASH is Veterans Administrative Supportive Housing. And that particular program, there's no waiting list for. It is by referral from the Veterans Administration. And so you have to be a veteran. So that's one. AMI is Area Median Income. Sorry about that. When you do this all the time, sometimes you lose the ability to speak in full words. And HCV is Housing Choice Voucher.
That helps. I could do the same thing with education things, too, can get confusing, so thank you.
Yes, no, I appreciate the reminder that I need to not always speak in our terminology.
Thank you for the question, Nadine. Does anybody have any further questions? Okay. Then we will move on to approve the resolution. All revisions would become effective immediately, except portions of the revisions only. Only the accepted changes would become effective. The resolution is in front of you. Can't find mine, but, hang on a second.
It is on the screen as well.
Oh, thank you very much, Caleb. Resolution 2024-07, Resolution to Amend the Section 8 Administrator Plan, Admin Only. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Ashley, I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Ashley, and we need a second?
This is Tatum, I'll second.
Thank you, Tatum. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussion? With no discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want me to do a roll call on that, Caleb?
I don't believe that's necessary.
Okay. And opposed? The same sign? Okay, the motion then carries. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on down the list. Resolution 2024-08, Asset Limitations for HCV. Kurt, you're still up?
I'm still up, thank you, Madam Chair. We can actually, the next two are very similar, but one affects public housing and one affects Section 8. Earlier this year, this Board voted on changes to the admin plan and also to the ACOG, which is Public Housing, based on HOTNA, which is the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act. That's that weird act that I really like. It has some really cool things in it, but they can't give us an effective date on it, even though we're supposed to pass policies because their computer systems can't handle it. Earlier, when this was presented, this Board voted to use what's called the limited the limited option, where if people were over $100,000, we would give them a warning and assets. And this is countable assets, this is not total. There's a lot of things that are excluded, such as retirement plans, household furnishings, your primary vehicle. So this isn't everything that you own, it's only, how do they call it? Non-necessary assets, I believe, and things like bank accounts and that sort of thing. There's been a change where we can actually say we are not going to enforce this limitation at all. We don't care if someone has over $100,000 in assets. Since this was changed, I wanted to present it to the Board for your opinion as to whether or not we would go with the limited that was previously voted on, or if we would go with the non-enforcement and just not even go by, you have over $100,000, you're out. So that's the quick version of that. Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Nadine.
So we can vote to not enforce asset limitations?
Correct.
On bank accounts? Okay.
Correct.
I'll just comment, I like that idea. Myself, I think that's good for residents.
And Kurt, I have a question. How do we verify all of that? What is the process?
So.
It sounds challenging.
If someone has under $50,000 in countable assets, based on HOTNA, we are actually able to take their certification of what their assets are and what the income is from those assets. If they have over $50,000, we do a hard verification, which means people are providing us with bank statements, pay stubs, I'm sorry, not pay stub, bank statements, statements from their brokerage statement, things of that nature. So it is a hard verification process if our participant or resident has over $50,000.
Can I, oh, go ahead.
We also have forms we can send for those people that have assets that they're having trouble obtaining the verification for. We send a form to the source, such as the bank, to verify that amount.
Do we have a lot of people that have assets over $50,000? No.
It's very rare. Clark Homes, I believe- Clark Homes, I believe, has a few. Clark Homes actually has one or two that's over a hundred thousand, which Clark Homes isn't managed by the board, but I just got through doing their analysis, so I'm aware. But I'm not aware of anyone in public housing or HCV that would be denied over this, but.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Or Kurt, did you have another comment?
No, ma'am.
Any further questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the resolution. It's Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight. The Resolution to amend the Section Eight Administrative Plan Admin Plan. I would accept a motion to approve.
This is Becky, I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Becky. And a second?
Sorry, this is Ashley, I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution as stated, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, those opposed, the same sign? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, Kurt, do you want to say anything more about the other one?
No, it's exactly the same thing, except that it changes the ACOG for public housing instead of the admin plan. So all of our jobs are easy on this one.
That's good. Does anybody have questions, Kurt, about the second resolution? Okay, with no questions, I would accept a motion to approve.
This is Ashley, I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Ashley, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett. So it has been moved and seconded that we approved Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine. Resolution to amend the public housing admissions and continue to occupancy policy, the ACOG. All those in favor, or is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Nadine. And opposed, the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. We made it through all of our resolutions. Thank you, Kurt, great presentations.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for working on this.
You make it easier to understand.
Good.
So we now move on to the Housing Commission update. And since Moses is not with us today, Sarah, would you like to comment? Oh, Sarah, we can't hear you.
Turn the camera on, I just didn't hit the on you button. Good morning, everybody. The Housing Commission, as happens with many commissions, not have a middle of the summer meeting. However, since then, we have had several items come forward. They've been working on the framework for the bond-funded Home Buyer Assistance Program and are looking at some different, of course, expanding the CHAP program that we have now, but also looking at some different options to move towards permanent affordability with some of the homeownership units in our community. And that next step will be going to City Council. We had a review of the eighteen-month report on the tenure plan, and that will also go to City Council, I believe, next week. And then an update from Sustainability on a project that we are partnering with them on regarding some ADU standards, accessory dwelling unit standards. Some of those are mandated by the state coming out of the last legislative session. However, even prior to that, we have been working internally and with our partners in sustainability on a few different options for adding, helping folks add accessory dwelling units to their homes or to the land that their home sits on as another way to increase rental units in our community. And one of those efforts, which was mentioned to the Housing Commission, is the creation of pre-approved plan sets. We're aiming for three or four of those designed by an architect that have already gone through the planning process. So that if someone were to come in and wish to use one of those plan sets, they would not have to incur the architectural and specific engineering fees for utilizing that plan set. They would still have to go through the site planning process, but the cost of the design and engineering, et cetera, would be eliminated, which is why we're looking at providing several different ones. So because different sizes, there's different topographical conditions, et cetera. And so those are the main things that the Housing Commission's been working on. And it looks like Chair Nadine may have her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Nadine, go right ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. You mentioned home buyer program. So as a Section Eight or Housing Choice Voucher holder, and I'm among several, and residents at Styler, I mean, if you're at Clark Homes and you have a hundred thousand dollars, you're sitting pretty good financially. What kind of plan do you have in place with the limited amount of income that I can bring in to purchase a home? Because if I make so much, then I'm paying most of my rent. If I work double time, then I could end up losing my voucher completely. Is there a savings program to allow us to be able to purchase our home? Or are we completely excluded from this program?
Thank you for the question. No, no one is excluded from the program. If they meet the eligibility criteria, which includes being a resident of Flagstaff, et cetera, being able to qualify for a mortgage, et cetera. Our current program funded that can serve households above a hundred, I'm sorry, above eighty percent AMI is funded with local funding. The expansion would be utilizing the seven million dollars of the housing bond funds that were set aside for that purpose. And no one is excluded. There are requirements, there are matching requirements. There is residency and Flagstaff requirement. I wasn't planning on going deep into detail on this one this morning. However, no one is excluded from it. If you have, we do not have the ability. Housing prices in our community are too high for Section Eight to homeownership to work effectively. That's something that we continually keep an eye on to see if that is a program we can work into the mix here. However, I think we just set the asset limitation to a hundred thousand dollars, which is quite a bit more than most households come in with towards homebuyer assistance, towards their down payment and closing cost.
Ashley? Did you have a question, Ashley?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll pit myself up.
No, no problem.
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Nadine.
So you're basically saying that while nobody's excluded, you have to make above eighty percent AMI, but you have to be below eighty percent AMI to be in assisted housing? And you could, you create a program that would allow somebody who's below to move into homeownership, but you have not done so yet? So it sounds like while you're not excluding anyone publicly, just based on numbers, we are excluded. And I would like to see some kind of resolution or program that would give us an opportunity to be homeowners.
So there is no floor? So it's not that someone under eighty percent is excluded from the program in any way, shape, or form? Quite often, the limiting factor is the ability to have an income to obtain a mortgage necessary to afford homeownership within our community. However, we have had folks go into some of our land trust units into things that are set aside or have additional subsidy that can come into the deal through with the WISH program, through a number of different options available to layer towards homebuyer assistance. And so there isn't, there is no exclusion for someone under an income limit. They are only, we have income limit ceilings, not income limit floors. And what I was talking about with Section Eight for homeownership is that the math on that program does not work in a community with home prices as expensive as ours. And so we continue to examine it. We continue to watch that eligibility and see if there is a way to make it work. To date, however, the numbers, the numbers don't work because of our expensive market, which is one of the reasons why it has been so important that we utilize general fund dollars and we utilize the bond dollars in order to be able to make our own local rules towards helping people get into homeownership. However, there are certain households that will not make enough in order to be able to afford homeownership even with additional homebuyer assistance subsidy. And so homeownership is an option for folks that have the ability to bring the mortgage to the table. And we can help with the upfront cash burden necessary in order to get into homeownership. That's the design of the programs here locally.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have further questions. So if, so the Housing Authority allows more flexibility for Clark Homes to have a hundred thousand dollars in assets? If, but Section Eight does not. And it sounds like you're saying that no matter how much we strive to be self-sufficient, if we could pay the mortgage payment because of where we are, we're always going to be there unless we win the lottery.
I think, hang on one second, Nadine. Kurt, you want to address that because that hundred thousand dollars is just not for Clark Homes.
Well, and I would like to add that.
This board just voted to not enforce that hundred thousand dollar asset limit for both Section Eight and public housing. So there's no barrier to the people we work with saving the money to engage in homeownership. Or any other tech, any other focus.
The Housing Authority Board does not oversee Clark Homes. That's a separate entity with a separate board.
Ashley, did you have a comment on this?
I did have a comment. I just wanted to say, I think it's awesome that the city housing people explore Section Eight to homeownership. I know it doesn't work in our city, but I'm glad that you guys have that kind of on your mind to see if it will ever work. I also wanted to comment that at Housing Solutions in Northern Arizona, we do go over homeownership and pre-purchase counseling. If anyone ever wanted to like explore that option, I think it would just be good because we do go over the city programs, down payment assistance, who qualifies, all that good junk, what it takes to be a homeowner. And really, I think the biggest barrier in our community is the cost of housing because we all make what we make. And sometimes what we make is not enough to get a mortgage. And getting a mortgage, I think, is our biggest barrier because of the cost of housing.
Thank you, Ashley, and that is so true. Nadine, does that answer some of your questions?
It does, it answers some of them, but I don't want to take up time. I can always schedule some time with Sarah, maybe even Kurt. Definitely check in with Housing Solutions, but I want to take up time for that. I'll just wait for a later date.
And I would suggest that these questions probably should go to the Housing Commission because we don't really, as a board, have the authority to make any of these decisions. So that might be a suggestion as well. And Mayor Daggett, you have a question or a comment?
Mayor Daggett, you may still be muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't know how that happened.
Oh, you're muted again, Becky.
Oh, I meant, I'm sorry, I don't know how my hand got raised.
How your hand got up. You were just texting me if I was paying attention, I get it.
Thank you for that.
And Nadine, thank you for considering everybody's time as well. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, and I wanted to mention, Nadine, we're of course happy to sit down and meet with you on questions specific to the Home Buyer Assistance Programs that likely isn't Housing Authority staff, that's staff on the other side of the house. But let us know if you'd like to do that, we're happy to set that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. Is that the update, that's the end of the housing update?
That's the end of the Housing Commission update, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to general business reports. So Sarah, you're still on the hot seat?
Still on the hot seat. Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for making today's meeting a priority so that we could get the number of resolutions passed and things into place so that we can continue to operate and make sure we're providing enough subsidy for folks to actually work within our market. Something I did want to mention is that the approval to the hundred and twenty percent will still require a HUD head nod. We typically get that HUD head nod. It'll be effective at a hundred and ten percent immediately. And we have the letter ready to go to HUD, but needed today's action in order to send that. So we've already talked to the HUD Field Office Director about our ongoing needs on an annual basis in this area. And really, will just be a matter of timing. I wanted to mention on behalf of Ms. Hart that she has requested a few items for the agenda. Those requests were done via email. We need to make sure they're verbalized here at the board meetings in order to be able to put them on future agendas. One of the items requested was to looking at the inspection standards for, that we're required to use by HUD. And unfortunately, that's not something that we, as the agency or even as the board, have any say in what the HUD inspection standards are. And we can go over what those standards are, what the, what the different. There's a difference between inspections for public housing and Section Eight, why they are that way, et cetera, and we can do a future presentation on that. Additionally, there was a request to propose changing the standard inspection frequency to every other year instead of what we do now, which is annually. And so now these are verbalized at the meeting. Everybody knows that those are the requests. Today's meeting agenda, as you could see, was rather full. And so those will be items forthcoming for upcoming agendas. I have good news to share. In a number of spots, our future, our voucher utilization rate is just above ninety-six percent, which is above where actually the bulk of our partners in the state are. And that's due to the diligent work of our Section Eight team, our voucher team. And so that's out of our total number of five hundred and twenty-two vouchers that they are responsible for the administration of. So people are being housed within that program. We have, at ninety-six percent is a high rate of utilization, and that's accounting just for the folks that roll off on a monthly basis, us being able to qualify and reissue those. Similarly, our occupancy in public housing is right around ninety-five percent, which is about a percentage point below where we run. And this is a foreshadowing moment. So someday I can say, remember when I mentioned, and now we're in talk. So HUD publishes, of course, our area median income. And that takes into consideration our entire metropolitan statistical area, which is the entire county of Coconino County. So as the main center of that metropolitan statistical area, our community has a large impact on what those numbers are, but not a full impact. And what we've seen is that with our state minimum wage and then on top of it, our local minimum wage standards continuing to go up, one, this data tracks two years behind. But two, HUD has put on an artificial cap on how high, what percentage area median. what percentage area median income can increase on an annual basis, and it's based on a national number. And so we have been watching, this is the second year, so we're under eighteen months or so into having these, these numbers this way, and we're just now starting to see the impact of where folks would previously, um, be eligible because of the cap on the, um, eligibility numbers. It's, it's, this sounds very unprofessional, it's messing us up. Um, we're required to house forty percent of new admissions into public housing from extremely low-income households. And right now, if that extremely low-income household has one person working at minimum wage, they would need to have a household of five in order to qualify as extremely low-income. So, it's, um, creating extra work for our programs, as we're having to go deeper and deeper and deeper into those waiting lists to identify folks with low enough income to meet our required income targeting, I've already talked to HUD about it. Um, we're keeping our eye on it, because we need actual data, not just, well, this feels like it's where it's going to go, we're just now starting to see those impacts, and we are actually working with the intent to house people and hit our targeting, so that we are not, um, out of compliance with either. But it's starting to be a challenge, so when we have more data, we'll come back and say, alright, now we know this, this, and this, and these are the actual impacts. But the good news is, is that in talking to our Field Office Director for HUD, um, he was very empathetic about it, and was suggesting some possible ways we can address that in the future, but first we have to have data. So, we had a couple of fairly, um, exciting things on the policy front happen in the last month, um, there was a visit to Arizona by one of the HUD Principal Deputy Assistant Secretaries, Richard Manaccio, um, we were invited to attend a meeting with the Maricopa Association of Governments in order to talk about some of the new, um, rulemaking that HUD has put into place, that they didn't follow their own procedures on, as well as review some other potential resources that could be coming, um, to the state to help with, um, both voucher programs and public housing. So, that was a good conversation, and then, um, Mayor Daggett um, was contacted by Tom Perez, who serves as Senior Advisor and Assistant to the President and Director of the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, um, for a visit, he was able to visit a week ago Monday. Um, they did a tour of JoJo's Place, um, and then we had a small community forum discussing our housing needs in the community, and we talked about those needs, um, from homelessness to homeownership, including our needs here at the Housing Authority. And it was great to be able to share that information with someone who has the ability to assist us with advocating on a federal level, um, for things like our AMI weirdness, or the rulemaking that came out, that when we have a better idea of... HUD hasn't even done the webinar on it yet, so we're not quite sure what we need to bring to you up, but we're following up on those. So those two opportunities in the past few weeks have been very, very helpful in helping folks at the DC level understand what our needs are. Um, priming the pump, if you will, for, uh, funding, or at least head nods, when someone says, well, then there's Flagstaff, which is, you know, a little different, um, because of our, our, the, how high our local minimum wage is, et cetera. And I think those are our, those are my, my biggest updates, knowing that, um, we are somewhat limited on time, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and Nadine had her hand up?
Okay, I had a question, so, um, sounds like you made a lot of connections with HUD. Um, what are you doing to put voucher holders in contact with people, or arrange that we can ask our own questions to the direct, the field director, or these various people? Like, while it's wonderful that you speak on our behalf, it'd be kind of nice to see what other Housing Choice vouchers would like to see from our own words, instead of, um, just assuming things like, you know, seeing stoppers will make it, I have a lot of questions as a voucher holder, and valuable information that he might want to hear from firsthand experience. Because if you don't have a voucher, it's different than someone speaking to a voucher. So, is there anything to let us know? Because I didn't see anything in my mail, or indication, so we could have more of a voice?
Um, thank you for the question, Nadine, um, these were very small meetings with very targeted topics, you of course are welcome to reach out to HUD, um, most often, the Field Office requests that the local housing authority be the conduit for those questions, and we'd be happy to sit down with you again and go over whatever your questions or concerns are. We do hear from folks like you, we do, um, take your comments very seriously, consolidate them, and communicate those things to HUD when, um, the opportunity arises, um, when we make comments on the implementation of federal regulations, et cetera, so um, if you have specific messages you would like us to carry, or of course, you are always welcome to reach out to the HUD Field Office, um, and we're happy to help you with that, if you would like to do so. Um, but seeing stoppers, we've, we've talked about a couple of times, um, and so if there's some stuff locally you want to revisit, maybe we can make a, a sheet or some notes for you, um, we're happy to do that.
I, I would just, I guess, like to see that more voucher holders have that information, um, added in the flyer that we get occasionally, so that we have access to the internet, or, or the, the email and the contact information. Looking it up on our own could prove very difficult for certain individuals, but it doesn't mean they don't have information that they want to share, beyond what you do. Like, there's a lot of us that would like to do that directly. So could you provide that to Housing Choice voucher holders, or no?
Um, of course, it's public information, so we're, we're able to do that. Um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your request, you were asking for us in the next, um, Section 8 newsletter to include contact information for the local HUD Field Office, correct?
Yes, I think that would be beneficial to all of us.
Okay. It's absolutely doable, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. And Nadine. Any further reporting? Any, but, anything from the members of this group? I think we might be done. The time is about ten, twelve, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and for your consideration of time. Have a great day.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good day.
For ending the meeting ends, recording stops at nine, uh, ten fourteen.
Thank you.